...at time is seven oh one, the Board of Alderman Special Meeting for Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Alderman Motley, Alderman Hudson.
President.
Alderman Wilkins, Alderman Decker.
President.
Alderman Rogers.
President.
Alderman Magus.
Yeah. All right, we have four of them, everybody stand and play the lead, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right. Thank you. That moves us into the number four budget workshop. I'll turn this over to you to start taking us through the departments and for discussion.
All right, so while we're on the topic of it, let's just go ahead and talk about what the Chamber is proposing. They, basically they're given three, three options that they can, how they, they could move forward. Where the first one states that they would basically just become an Anchor Fest support organization only with contracted season labor, no office, no members. Second option would be the Chamber hires an office manager to handle membership billing, ribbon cuttings, and community flyers, Anchor Fest will be contracted out. And then the third, the third option, which is what of course they, they would like to see, is the Chamber hires a dedicated director who will market Centaria and its members in a great place to live, look and play, a director who is beginning to develop community events like the Wine Walks, the Saturday and Pumpkin Fest. Community representation, webpage management, social media exposure, business development, outreach, as well as ongoing sustainable fundraising will be a critical piece of this job. They do go on to explain that they are raising rates as far as, for like, sorry, excuse me, what they're going to have, their memberships for the businesses. They're gonna have stronger fundraising partnerships. So, I've had several meetings with, with the board at the Chamber. They've got a lot of really good ideas. They're really wanting to continue moving forward. It's really hard right now because they're all full-time business owners, some of them multiple business owners, and they're struggling. So they're, they're really looking at a way on how they can move forward and get someone in there to, to kind of direct. They do have Brittany Harper in charge of the Anchor Fest right now, and she really is doing a really good job. But I'm, I'm thinking that that's who they want to bring in for the director position. So they are asking for twenty thousand dollars. So in my conversations with them, I did ask them to consider the biannual payment, which is what they have in here. They asked that the ten thousand dollars, if we were to consider this, ten thousand dollars be paid at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then six months from now, they will come in and we would reevaluate to see if the other ten thousand dollars is what you would agree to. It's not in here, but I would suggest, since this is a contract year, we need to sign a contract with them, either a biannual contract or the yearly contract with that stipulated in it. If we do go with the biannual payment and the twenty thousand dollars, it would increase what we have in that fund from ten thousand dollars, because we pay for the six thousand dollars to the Chamber out of this fund and the fireworks. So that would need to be increased to twenty-six thousand, so it'd be a sixty thousand dollar increase.
You know, as, as a, as a, as a town, we gotta forget about the past. It's a very needed thing if it's done right, it's very valuable. You gotta, you can't go backwards, you gotta look at, at, if you got good people.
And I, and I think in fairness, Donnie, when you make that statement, it's what do you want from the role? And what do you envision it being, right? And what was it in the past and what has it changed to today? So it's not so much as poor people or, or, it's, it's more, I think, a, a change in attitude and latitude of what you're trying to do. So in fairness, I think probably that's the way to probably put it. I agree with what you're saying, what's the value and what's the new, what's the new agenda that they have with this role? Because they're, they really have shown a lot of good ideas, a lot of invigoration, a lot more people wanted to get involved from the, from the businesses, which it hasn't had.
That's a good thing.
And, and younger people are doing that, so I've seen, I would.
They're actually getting help. I think they've struggled in the past getting help and now.
It was one, one person.
We all need this, you know, it, it, it affects our town. I like to do it free, but it, and raising the rates would be a great thing for them to do too a little bit. I mean, but not too much, but.
But I, I did, in my discussions with them, I explained to them what the board wants and needs to see from the Chamber. They are intending to do a yearly audit, they're getting that process started, and they do intend to be at monthly committee meetings to give reports.
Did we ever get a business plan from them? Because I asked for them to give us a business plan of what they plan on this, the duties being spelled out very clearly with what KPIs would be, key performance indicators in that role, that if they did this and they made this many calls, or they add this many new members to the, to the Chamber, that being part of the requirement, right, in that role? Did we ever get that fully baked out?
I don't believe they've gotten to that point yet.
You know?
They're trying, I know that they're trying to get.
I, I, I feel that it should be one of the conditions of us partnering with them, if we partner with them further with more money as partners, that they give, they give us a business plan and expectations of the role that's gonna be the expanded full-time versa that's gonna be in it instead of the part-time stuff and the other stuff they were talking about, right, volunteers. That that be part of us accepting to be the sudden contract.
To ask for it within the first three months or for six months?
First thirty days.
First thirty days.
But yeah, how can you be looking to hire somebody is my point, if you don't know what you're looking for in a person? You've gotta have that stuff baked out, that, that would make absolutely no sense.
They should already know that.
To be, that's my point, that should already be written, you know?
They've got a job description they've put together, whether they've applied it or.
And then how you measure it. So how you measure the form, right?
I don't really measure it, I don't know if they've decided that, but they've got a job description. I mean, everything they talk about is great. This comes out of the general fund though, and that's where we're struggling. And I.
And we're gonna get to that, and I was actually able, we have a four hundred thousand dollar reserve contingency.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
If you, if you give them the opportunity and say, hey, we're gonna give them the money, I think they'll do everything you want. You say, hey, you got a good chance of getting this money, but you gotta do this, this, this. These are business people, they don't have a lot of time, but they would do that, I guarantee it.
Well, it just sets it up for more success, right? I mean, for me, I mean, that's what.
They would do it.
I can't go, I can't go to the President, Vice President candidate and say, I wanna do this, and, and, you know, just give me the money, I gotta have a business plan, I gotta be able to show a return on investment and everything. So, but they need to be able to do that too. It doesn't necessarily mean it's always, you always wanna get back to dollarizing something, but in a town, the city of Centaria, there's value that is brought that you can't put a dollar figure to. Okay, really, like the pool or where it's parked. It's an amenity you need to have because the fact is, it's, it's just needed for a, a town, period. So you gotta subsidize that a little bit, the budgeting over there when they're looking at their, their, their pool money. I mean, as a taxpayer, I'm, I'm fine with that, you know? So I mean, I just think that they, they need to have, have all this in place to, to be successful with what they want and to get more quickly, right?
Okay. Well, I, I can definitely talk to them this week and then have, I just, I need to start working on a contract because I haven't got, I've been this month.
So what you just said, are you, are you in favor of doing it? The money?
You talking to me?
Yeah. What you just said, I mean, you, I think, are we all kinda like talking, yes, if the, the criteria?
I, I, I think based upon what our general fund looks like and what it's looking like, if we have the capacity to do that, because economic development is something that we're challenged with doing, if this helps with some of that, bringing some other businesses to town potentially, exploiting the business we have in a positive way, selling Centaria, it's revenue based for us if we sell more stuff in the city of Centaria, through our merchants and the people we have. And so there should be a payback based upon, based upon the business plan.
Yes.
You should be able to figure, if you're gonna grow eighteen percent, we can take a look at that through the value of the dollars that were generated by those, those Chamber of Commerce businesses, and be able to figure a return on cash back in revenues and tax money for us. The city can see, see what that looks like for us.
So, we can't just, yeah, we, we gotta like, hey, we're, I think we'll do this. We're not committing a hundred percent.
Well, but if, if we say we're gonna do it, I have no problem sitting down with them and going through that process, or I think Robert would be glad to help with that, to talk with them and work through a business plan. I think, I think the people know what they wanna do, and I, I think they do have definitely a, a job description with that question, but I think that it, it, it needs to be, instead of being so general, you've gotta get more singular in expectations of, of under this than this, this, and this is what you'll do. These would be the expectations, this is how we measure those for the person you bring in the role. And in fairness, I, in fairness, how do you hold somebody accountable for doing a great job or a poor job if you really haven't had that in place?
You can't.
But that's unfair to the person that's doing the job or was doing the job.
This is the only thing you can measure really, right?
Right, it's, it's pretty black and white at this point.
It's a thing a town needs, and, and I think we've got the right working people, so.
Those are my thoughts, you guys go ahead and chant it out, I'm gonna just listen, but I'm, I'm definitely not opposed to it. If the budget is fortunate, I would be in favor of it, but they need to understand, this is not an automatic thing. We, we, it needs to be, they need to show success.
They need to prove it out, they need to prove it out.
They need to show success, because otherwise, we're probably not gonna fund it next year, right?
Yeah, well, that, that, I agree with that, that's a yearly contract.
Yeah.
Yes, a yearly contract.
I don't want them to think this is just.
It's a three-year contract.
Well, yeah, we just said, it's a twenty-five.
When they ask.
Yeah, no.
Well, that's not gonna work.
I think it should be an annual contract, especially with this new, new version of what we're doing. You gotta give them a year. It's, it's gonna take somebody ninety, a hundred and twenty days to get in the role and really get to going and dive into it, get everything set, and, and, and then to start performing on those, on those things that they're supposed to be producing, right? So I mean, so I think, yeah, you gotta give them a year contract, and we reserve the right to end that year. We'll have a, a meeting and we'll, we'll, we'll review how it went, what did it produce? Did it produce what was sold and, and agreed to in the business plan upfront? Or we get close, and oh, by the way, if you look at the last four months, where we were trending ten percent above what we, or fifteen percent above what we were planning on, so I mean, there's ways to look at it. It's, it's, so the first half of the year may not be as robust, I wouldn't expect it to be, but you expect the back half of the year to be showing real signs of improvement and, and, and something you could say, yeah, this is, you can make a decision to tend to it. So I think you gotta give it a year if you do it.
So are you wanting to do this first one as a yearly contract? And I know we're getting off the budget part a little bit, but I just need to know what I need to put in the budget book for twenty-six thousand.
Well, I think you can divide it into two things.
Divide it two ways.
Right, but does that need to be a six-month contract and then?
Yes.
It would automatically renew.
I have a good thing too.
It's gonna take time. You would give them a year contract, you pay biannually, with the first payment being the first day of the, of the new, new budget year.
Maybe, well, that's gonna be the first day, but.
Whatever.
In April.
Write checks on the tenant.
Yeah.
That's right, we did that, right?
Okay, all right, so I'll be in contact with them, and I'll get you guys interested.
We just wanna, we really wanna hear from them though, how are they gonna measure success?
Okay.
And if it's, if it's not something that can be measurable, then we may need to really have a hard conversation about it. And that's only assuming based on, I, I was ready to say no until you said we have some surplus or a buffer.
Right, you can't use that money.
And you guys can change your minds after you look at it, that's fine. Let's.
I think whoever the director is oughta come in here and give them a report.
Well, that's.
They actually stand to remain.
I think they will.
One time a year.
They will, they will.
Well, at, at the end of Anchor Fest, thirty, the, the, the following month after Anchor Fest, they should come in there with a profit loss report of what was, how much income they took in, what their costs were, how many boosts they had, and an overview of the success of that financially. Then you can measure year over year how it's growing or not.
All the events they have bring in a lot of revenue that's un, you can't measure. You have to look at, what if we didn't have any of this? Ooh, ooh, kinda missed that one, I didn't, you know, but we gotta. I think they've got some good people, you, you, I'm not, I know they do.
Well, here's the thing, if you've got people wanting to help, more people wanting to help than we've had in the past, and it's a one-person show, then I think you should take advantage of that.
Exactly.
And, and take, of that, that enthusiasm and that diversity of some people wanting to help. It would've been great if that happened four years ago, it didn't. So, that's why I say, it's, it's a different time of the resources willing to donate their time and to help. So, that changes the complexion of what that job could look like for that success to be in that role.
Do you guys want the information we're talking about tonight for the budget?
Hats off to you, Linda, I mean, all the time you, you know.
And you got real support.
You know what we're talking about, you were.
But there wasn't, there wasn't tons of people.
No, none of these people ever were on board, and none of them ever stepped up and did anything.
Exactly.
And that was a problem itself.
And I'll say this, most of those people are new back to Centaria.
Yeah.
And so in fairness, that's changed, so it wasn't, that, that's why, you know, I think it, it was what it was and then what it can be, and that's what.
And you kept it going all these years.
Well, no, I mean, the last three years, we haven't had anything to do with it because they haven't been in our office. And so people.
Were scared they were losing.
Mm-hmm. But I, I, I will say that I don't know that they really lost as much money as what they said because they weren't paying any rent or utilities because it was in Jenny's house all these years. And it would be nice to know, and, and for you all, what they have in the bank.
We will know that.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we're gonna know that.
I mean.
No, no, hopefully, we will know that.
If we're gonna be business partners, there'll be, there'll be taxpayers. Yep, and that's, that's for that, so I think that we're on the right track.
I, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, this first little packet here, it's got a schedule on it for the water department, electric department, and the street department. So this is the, for the safety gear, where they proposed where we get rid of the safety money program, where we give each employee a hundred and fifty dollars a year to buy some of this stuff. Now, quite a bit of this is already supplied by the city, the rain suits, winter coat, ice spikes, hard hats, head lants, gloves, space coverings. The only thing that would be added that we don't already pay for is the mud boots. One set of the mud boots was not provided, so some of the departments have insulated, some of them have non-insulated. It's kinda hit and miss there, I don't know what, what happened there, but, and then we would add bibs, vests, and overalls. The rest is, is paid for. I really think that this is gonna be a wash, especially with a strict replacement schedule, and these items are bought by the city, so they'll be used at the city. Um, the supervisors, the foremen have been in conversation with their guys and let them know, now if the city gets this, this is, this lives at the city, you don't take it home and use it for personal use. So they all understand that. If they do happen to use something outside of work and it breaks, and it leaks or rips, they are responsible for replacing it, full cost on their own dollar.
And if they're caught working unsafely because they damaged something at home, that should be dealt with appropriately.
Yes, um, it shouldn't even be allowed because if the foreman were to see it, they would take him off the job.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I was saying it nicely.
Yeah. Now, they're, they're all really pretty aware of this, they've been really good to work with, and they all understand that this would be a pretty big deal.
I'm just making sure they have the right equipment.
Right, yeah. Um, the other part that goes along with this is if we want to get, decide not to renew our uniform contract at the end of the year. Um, it comes renewable in December, I do believe. Um, if we chose not to do that, we could just purchase the jeans and the F R shirts.
What, what's the cost just to get out of business with them?
Um, currently, we pay with our average bill, the uniform a month.
Um, four twenty-five to four sixty.
A month? Okay.
No matter if you use anything or not, you pay.
Yeah, and we.
It's a memory.
They have possession of the jeans or whatever, if they're not wearing them and they don't turn them in, we still get charged for them, and then the rugs and stuff like that are on there too.
Well, a lot of, a lot of people don't wanna, don't wanna use the service, is that correct? I mean, the majority of the employees don't wanna use the jeans.
The electric department is leaving uniforms as of April one, that's in the union contract, there's nothing we can do about that, we're going to have to pay for that service anyway. They carry the burden of the cost because it's F R. And we can only dip down so below, so far below our contract price before we have to pay for it anyway, even though we're not using the service.
So who would take over the, the job of monitoring, monitoring everything? You all or the department heads?
So, we wouldn't launder anything for them. If they decided, if everyone decided to leave, which each of the departments is fine with, the upfront cost would be, I'm not gonna say it's terrible, I think it's right around three or four thousand dollars per department, the electric department's a little bit higher because they have F R jeans and they're like a hundred and thirty dollars a pair, and I believe shirts are eighty dollars a piece. Then, after that, though, we would replace three pairs instead of giving them seven pairs at the gate. But we're not laundering it for them, it's literally just your first year on, you get seven pairs and then.
We're paying about five grand a year, so if it takes, it might take us a few years to break even essentially, but we will.
Yes.
And we've gotta give, there's a set date on that contract that you have to give them notice by in writing.
Date is October, unless we decide early on, and then I can just go ahead and give them that notification now. And so, it, it would just be what we decide. No, 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 we have to decide that right away as far as the jeans go. I don't know if they'd be willing to continue the contract until April one of next year and not end in December, I don't know.
I think we have a decision made, and we, we, we notify them in the timeframe dictated by the contract for notification that we're a part company.
I would just need to budget that money in for this year if we decided to go that route.
I think that sounds like it needs to be budgeted.
I, I think it does, it sounds like me.
I mean, the department heads wanna, the departments wanna move forward with the alternate approach. Only one that comes out of general fund is street.
And they'll have to individually manage the hygiene part of it, if these people don't wanna work their jeans and they get to where they can't stand up by themselves or whatever, they're gonna have to tell them, give them a little coaching there on that one.
I don't think any of them have a problem saying anything about hygiene, so, okay.
You don't want to wash it here at the fire, at the fire room. Yeah, there you go, thanks, yeah, do some sort of fire training with them.
There are washers and dryers at the water department and the fire department if something gets particularly disgusting while they're out doing some of the jobs that they have to do, so. Okay, so we are looking at this and the jeans and the F R shirts.
I think we should.
Fire resistant. Our electric crew has to wear.
Worst comes to worst, down the road, we can always go back.
I mean, you gotta budget it for the, the electrical, if we're gonna drop it in April.
I, I, these service companies have such turnover that you have such a terrible time getting any kind of service out of them. And then they, one person, if they get promoted, because they actually show up for two months in a row, they get a promotion, and then they just throw somebody else in their drive and trying to figure out what to do, like getting trained. See, only they cross-train everybody, shit out of them, and so it, it, it's a mess. And I was, I was very underwhelmed in that meeting we had with their, what was he, he was some, what level was he in the company?
I think he was a regional.
Regional or divisional manager? And I don't know what, I don't know where he come from, so I'll just tell you that. But, so anyway, um, I don't think we're gonna get good service out of them as much as one truck.
So far, I know that two of our employees have had to send the new round of jeans back already because the, one of them, the tag said it was the correct size, but he could wrap them around them almost twice.
They're lesser.
And then the other one, the tag on the jeans says that they were a certain length, but someone hand-wrote in another length, which is what was needed. So they were like, well, maybe they hemmed them or something to make them the correct length, put them on, and they were six inches too long, so.
Yeah.
Well.
Every one of those companies are the same, and then they have struggles with everything, little one. This is what the department heads want, making a point, I know for it.
Okay.
So with that, what, how does that affect the rugs and stuff like that? Would we still have a rug contract with somebody or?
We, we would need to go out for them for the rugs.
Okay, because I mean, that's, they're all together right now, right?
Yeah.
So.
I believe that the departments, and I, I know at least two foremen have offered to take care of the rugs and the mats. I don't think that's a long-term solution though.
No, I know that.
So, okay, so that one, question isn't answered. So, next, we're gonna move on to trash rates. So I put two different rate increases in here for your information. If we do not change rates at all, um, we're looking at in October, we have to have a new trash contract. So we don't know what our rates will increase. Danes was allowed to increase as either two or three percent a year for their contract anyway, for increase of, you know, annual cost.
When our contract's up, then it would be a new contract, right?
Yeah, so we've, we're, we're, we need to put out an R F T or R F Q and then, um, see what that brings in.
We, we need to do that.
But we know, yeah.
It's gonna go, it'll go a lot more than that three percent.
Yeah, and that's what I'm worried about, so that's why I wanted to bring this to you now because even if we left it the same and they, and we didn't have an increase in charges, we would still be about fifty to sixty thousand dollars short in that fund. So we, we, we have to.
We can't, we can't, we can't operate anything in a deficit.
No, so.
For services, we, we don't wanna, we're all taxpayers here, I mean, we don't wanna put a huge burden on somebody's back, but the longer you wait, the more that comes home to roost with a larger amount that you can't afford at your household income, you can't budget for it, just like the electric, right? We know that that contract's gonna change and be extremely, extremely higher than the contract that we lucrative have been able to, to use. It's gonna be thirty percent or more, and you can't.
Forty percent or more.
And, and you can't put that on somebody at one time, so you're gonna start to feather it in now. Um, where's palatable? So, bottom line is, you can't operate any deficits, so what are our options? Would you say?
Fifteen and a twenty percent increase here, is that what this is?
Uh, yes, but, okay, so, um, I'm, I only put in here a one-dollar increase for residential. So Danes currently charges, I believe, let's see, let me look at my notes. They charge us eleven eighty-seven for regular, eleven eighty-six for general residential customers. Our residential customers currently pay seventeen sixty. That's because we include in, um, all of our customers can get a longer dumpster for free once a year for a week, has two dumps off of it. The recycling is paid through that, and, um, we give our seniors a discount, so that kinda helps to make up for that deficit also. So, I'm not recommending that we raise residential trash too much because the.
How much, how much a year are we paying in recycling? If that's part of that, we might as well talk about recycling promote because.
Recycling is about five to sixty thousand dollars a month.
So sixty thousand dollars a year.
A month?
Sixty, sixty, five thousand is sixty thousand dollars a year.
Yes.
So it's, so we know it's, we know it's fifty to sixty thousand dollars with a minimum. And people are complaining all the time about the recycling, they want us to buy more dumpsters, and, and my time of sitting out there drinking a Dr. Pepper and talking to eleven people that showed up, seven of them were not even residents of City of Centaria. I've talked to three people, one coming to the real estate office out there, meeting their friend that had a truck, a pickup truck full of recycles, and they'd come from Mexico with it, and they were gonna have ones, and they were gonna go up here by the water tower and utilize. And I understand why these people are doing it, so don't get me wrong, I mean, I understand they're wanting to, to protect the, the environment, wanna recycle, I get all of that, but, but if we're not going to be able to police that, is it, is it, is it worth the pain and punishment of fifty thousand dollars a year? And we don't know if it gets dunked, if it gets mixed with the wrong thing in it, they pull it over to the landfill and dump it out. And, and they're not gonna sort through that stuff. So I don't know what we're getting for that, but I do know that most of, at least fifty percent of what gets put in there comes from up town. I, I, I wish we said it.
Well, any contractors.
And that's the other problem.
Yeah, when contractors do like, say they're installing cabinets in a new home, all that cardboard's going into our, I mean, that, that fills it up immediately, one, one stop and it's full, so.
And that doesn't buy it as much as the people outside of, from outside of town, because if that's work is being done in Centaria, I, I can, I can live with that.
Food for thought, but I was in Mobley today, and. Food for thought, but I was in Mobley today and right there by the worst lens and that, wherever it is, they have a recycle bin. But it's not the city of Mobley, it's organizations sponsors these things. They don't do it and they have organizations do it. And they incur all the costs, you still got the recycling. But the city of Mobley isn't on there, it's all, but everybody that.
Well, we've had, we've had people that think that.
I don't know if that's what we could do.
The city of Columbia provides the service. They don't, their dumpsters, you know, their recycle bins, I've heard that three or four times. We actually, uh, had someone at the town hall meeting for the ARPA money, talked to me before that and said, well, but those are from Columbia. The dumpsters are part of the county stuff with Columbia, right? I said, no, they're ours, we own them. And I said, you know, I said, through the city of Columbia, it's their, is a teammate.
They pick it up.
Picks it up, but, but they, they charge for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I'm just having fun with that.
It's, but it's, it's from the residents, it's coming out of the residents is my point. So, I don't know if I wanna be spending sixty thousand dollars on something that we're not getting benefit for if I can give it back to the residents and not have to raise the rates so much.
Well, if you're gonna raise commercial rates, I have a problem doing the recycling thing and then you, we have to pay for it. You know, I mean, so here we go.
So, okay, so commercial we're losing money on.
Huh?
Um, Danes charges us more than what we currently charge our.
I understand, but, you know.
And we put out one trash bag maybe a month and we're paying commercial rates or business rates.
We can't afford to lose money anyway.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's, you know. I, again, it's helping you all because we're paying and we're putting out one trash bag a month, yeah.
Not that we're not wanting to.
The recycling thing, if we took that out of your equation, we wouldn't be so far in debt, would we?
But I think that you'll get quite a back line.
You're gonna get pushed out.
I understand that.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't cut the service.
It'd be just like the cats, it'd be backlash like the cats, so what the heck, what the recyclers come in here?
Here's my, here's my point. You don't, you don't cut necessary or, or quality services out for a budget, just to do, to, to make mon- to get money back, right? But, we're not spending crazy at all and we're up against, gonna be double digit, I think, growth in cost, we're just better operating, right? We've talked about it. And, my point is, this thing, you can't police it, the place that you gotta buy cameras and carry on and all this other stuff. Then if, if you get a big glut of people on a weekend, the stuff's on the ground and everything else and we've got the street department over there working for an hour or two, picking it up and straightening it up. We got people calling and complaining about it, so, it's, it's, it's one of those things where those people that are passionate about it are gonna be upset. But, we're not, it's not that we don't care about the environment, it doesn't make practical sense for us to provide the service.
Now, the other side of that is, is that it's gonna go in the trash and we'll have to pay more every time they go to Columbia to dump trash.
We still do curbside recycling, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but they don't take much.
They, they don't take any fibers material, no newspapers, no.
All they take is.
We don't take plastic.
No, they only take plastic and metal.
Yep.
That's it.
I mean, here's one of those deals again, we can't grumble about it for a year, we're gonna have to. Do it or not do it. Or, the vice president of recycling's gonna have to monitor.
It's, it's, it's hard to, it, it's hard, I mean, it's been a real burden, I mean, for me, and myself, I mean, I got people turning on about it from both sides of the fence and, and. I don't see that, how you would manage it and manage it to where it meets in its optimum for what we're wanting to do with, with the intent of this program. And there's a lot of other cities that don't even offer it.
Yeah, they're having.
And there's a lot of those cities that are, that are, that's hard to hear the news, and if you go to Columbia, you wanna talk about a mess, go over there where they got some of those. Those recycle bins, they're overflowing and it's everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
That's awful.
It's awful, it, it's like, it's like you put the.
Old D people used to have it, they're a lot more trash.
It was unbelievably bad, so.
It was awful.
Look, I, I don't know what to say about it, but at least with the other, the cost, you know.
I'd say get rid of them.
I, I, I'm, I'm at that point myself, because I don't see a way of policing it, you gotta put up a five thousand dollar camera setup to get something that actually you can get tags and license plate. Then you gotta go give these people a ticket, get them to pay, and you have all that.
We have to have an officer sit there and watch it.
Yeah, it's another head count, you can't.
Paying somebody to do that.
Yeah, I would rather the, we, we manage our, our staff.
The citizens of Central know that, okay, we're not gonna raise your rates as much now because we're getting rid of this service, otherwise, we're just gonna.
Well, that's one of the things that'll happen from it, but it boils down to the fact that the program is not managed.
Where are people gonna do with cardboard?
They have to drive it to the recycling themselves.
I'm not a fan of that. Is there any recycle people in here?
Well, we did all the time, but that's the same.
I use it all, I use it all the time, they dump it Monday, Wednesday and Friday, so I try to go, I, I'll go one o'clock on one of those days.
So, what are you thinking if we just got rid of it, what, I know.
I don't know where I would go with cardboard.
Well, the fact, he'll take it in the trash.
Yeah, but the trash rate's gonna go up.
That's what I'm saying.
It's just about time till that goes up.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We're gonna pay for it one way or the other.
So, what's your thought of that? I mean, are you gonna be like disgusted, you got, because we got rid of the recycling?
I'm for saving that.
You represent all the recycle people in Central.
I mean, I, you really think half of it comes from people that don't live in the city or, or, or contract?
Harold, he's on with you on that dude.
Half of more comes from, half of more comes from, yeah, the construction.
Well, I have Facebook posts on Facebook and Maxco.
Tell them I did it. It's easy as that, go to Rogers Row, right across from Orson, take a left, go over the second set of tracks where the water tower is and you'll see the dumpster, the, the, the bin right on the right. It, did you not send that out to us?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it.
They're driving over here in their own.
I mean, but, okay, a couple of weeks ago, I, I said we had three options on this thing and I mentioned killing it and everybody said, no, we wouldn't do it. Not that I was in the favor of killing it, I just threw it out there. Now, we're here and wanna kill it, I don't agree with killing it, I mean, it's the right thing to do for the environment and there's a cost associated with it. I'm not saying we throw more money at it at this point, but I mean, there's people in the city who obviously care about it and wanna use it. Maybe what we do is we plan and budget it for the year and then we see if there's any organizations that wanna do the Mobley type of thing, I mean.
Okay, but so if somebody, so if somebody from Mexico uses it, what do we do? Have we done anything?
It's, it's catch and all.
If you get their tag number, then you, then you gotta chase that through the legal side of it, give them.
Don't have an ordinance says they can't use it.
It's illegal dumping.
Yeah, it is, and it's, it's posted out there.
Yeah.
In green, they can't read it, it's camouflage.
They actually have a penalty associated with that?
Well, I.
I think we ought to build people who are breaking the system, rather than punish everybody. Which is what we always do with everything. We ought to deal with those who are offenders.
How do we catch them?
I just don't know how to do that without setting an officer out there.
Well, it may take that for a week or two.
Well, it's posted and we need to put a penalty out there that makes it worthwhile.
Well, it says it's illegal.
Yeah.
Central residents only?
Yeah.
If somebody is seeing a sale, I'm gonna pay twenty-five bucks if I get caught, what was it, almost five hundred bucks?
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's a limit, but.
But how you gonna catch them? Chris? You gotta, I mean, you send a police officer out there, you're throwing money at it. Paying to buy the hours to sit out there.
You, you catch a few and the word gets around. You catch, you catch a few and the word gets, you don't have to be there at the point, every, every, every month, every day. You, you put somebody in there for two weeks and you catch half a dozen people and you charging five hundred dollars, by the way, the word's gonna get around. It'll be in Mexico before the guy gets back there.
That'll stop the caravan of like.
Yeah, it will stop that. Well, I would, I'm gonna try something.
The other thing is, is the illegal stuff, or not illegal, but the stuff that they're putting in there. I mean, there was a lampshade in the cardboard's side the other day, so that's got wire and.
This is what I'll say, the people that are from out of town.
They don't care.
Well, no, they, they were all bringing the right kind of pro- product, materials, they had it broke down, they had it ready, so they could get more in the truck.
That's funny.
So it rode, you know, I mean, they had it, I mean, so I mean, they had good intentions of what they're doing, they wanna recycle. So, I'm not, I'm not saying these people are bad people for coming up here and I think a lot of them did not know, so that's probably part of the educational process of it. And then if we do hammer somebody for a while, then if it continues to be a problem like that, then we can readdress it, you know, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
If the people from Mexico are coming up here, what's Mexico, what is Mexico?
Well, it's not just Mexico now, there's people out in Boo County bringing it here too, don't say just.
Yeah, there's people out.
They're residents, you know.
I know Mexico had one, but I think it caught fire.
What happened to it?
Well, see, it, it shows up periodically at Orson's parking lot, it's just there and then it's not, and then it's there and then it's not, so I don't know what's going on there.
They may only have one dumpster, so when they pick it up and take it.
And they got twice as many people as us.
No, they don't, they just come here.
No, I, I mean, yeah.
Oh, I know, I, I know what you're talking about.
Population wise.
Well, it's just, so that's why I was saying a dollar residential, you don't have to go with any increase on residential if you don't want to. Um, the big one is a fifteen percent increase, increase on the, um, commercial solid waste. And, um, it, it would also roll down to the miscellaneous solid waste charges as far as like advanced charges, um, for trash, extra fees, rental, so on and so forth. Um, the loaner dumpster program, we do spend on average about four thousand dollars a year on, just putting that out there. It's not a huge cost and.
Is it, is it used often?
It is.
So, I say we keep that.
I've used it, I know people have used it myself.
Yes, love to keep throwing their stuff away.
Ten years I've lived here and I'll tell you what, it's, it's a great thing.
People are using remodeling and stuff, I mean, or whatever.
But you're not supposed to use it to remodel.
No, but I mean, when, when, when they, when they bring in, the, the spring cleaning and they bring in boxes and stuff that you have, they're not putting, you know, sinks and stuff in so much.
I had a kid about, he left about half his room, it was in the dumpster, a couple hours.
But if it keeps him from leaving it on the outside of their house or in their yards, then that's, that's great. I think that's probably what the spirit of the loaner dumpster program is.
Well, now, on the loaner ones, I thought I heard you say that it's only supposed to be for a week. What about the ones who keep them for months, do we charge them for that?
They don't.
That, that's not a loaner dumpster.
Danes will, Danes will pull in there and pick that dumpster up when it's a week, yep.
Yep, they come get it.
They don't care where it's at, they'll be.
There was one over here on Jefferson that sat in the front yard for six months.
Are you sure it was not a loaner dumpster? Because we rotate those things, that's two loaner dumpsters.
There's a waiting list.
Oh, I, I'm sure, but that one sat there for six months.
Did it?
Maybe it wasn't one of ours.
I think it was a rental. If this kind of Danes, you pay two dollars a day.
I'm gonna bet, I'm gonna bet without question it was a rental.
That's very possible, man, I'm just.
And you called.
I'm already here.
You can get a rental dumpster once a year, or you can call, I mean, call and get a loaner dumpster once a year, or you can get a rental dumpster anytime, it's fifty-five cents a day, thirty-one dollars to deliver.
Wow.
And so we deal a lot.
Twenty-two dollars a day.
Well, I, I mean, I just was asking because I thought, well, if it's our loaner and it's sitting there for six months, then.
They're paying fifty-five cents a day.
Okay, that's cool then.
What are you proposing again, a dollar for the residential, how much on the commercial?
So, I've got two rates here, fifteen percent or twenty percent, um, so if we are on commercial.
Fifteen sounds a lot better.
I say twenty.
You've got a dollar. Where's fifteen?
Where's fifteen?
So, fifteen.
Gotta make up for that recycling.
Okay, you're, the dollar at the top, that raises twenty-three thousand, is that included in what's raised down here?
Correct, so if you took that off, you would have to subtract that amount from this bottom number.
So, are we whole on the residential if we don't have the dollar, or are we negative?
Uh, we would need to raise more than twenty percent.
Oh, I was gonna say, on the residential alone, are we in the hole?
No, because we, we, we do charge more than what Danes charges us. For commercial, I don't understand how some of these rates were figured, um, but we, we could re-figure when we had a new contract, I believe. But, as of right now, if we wanted to, um, go fifteen percent, if you keep the dollar increase, that would put us at forty-six thousand dollars back into the fund. If we do a twenty percent with the dollar, that would get, get us up to almost sixty thousand dollars.
How much was the loaner?
Fifteen.
Fifty to sixty thousand dollars.
What if we did fifteen percent and a dollar and a half? What about twenty percent, leave the residential alone?
If you leave the residential alone, you're, you're losing twenty-seven thousand dollars of that increase.
I know.
So that does, that, you almost have to do the dollar with the damn here and twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we think about, we wanna, we should have a buffer in the, in the fund. One rates are gonna go up late in six months or whatever it is when we get a new contract. We, we need to plan for some level.
You're right here, the, the dollar and the twenty percent.
Well, do we need to hit ten percent this year, or is it, we know over two years we'll get ten percent of a buffer out there? That would, we could do the fifteen percent and the dollar and we would get there within, within two years. Depending on what rate increases would be, I mean, we may have enough.
We haven't heard the whole story yet, but, I mean, we're fifty to sixty thousand in hold, the dollar and fifteen raises us forty-six thousand dollars. So, we're still short.
We're still short.
We're still short.
Oh, we're still.
We're still short.
With the fifteen percent.
With the fifteen, whereas with the dollar and the twenty percent, that's raising fifty-eight thousand.
Tony, you just need to give a.
And the recycling's free.
Well, recycling's paid for by every residential customer.
Well, a citizen, well, a citizen.
A citizen to use, but it's.
It's free for the county.
I don't recycle, sometimes I do a lot, but, I do it Christmas and stuff, I gotta dump and recycle, I mean, so.
So, without the twenty percent and the dollar, we're not whole?
Yeah, you're fifty to sixty thousand in hold.
With the dollar and the twenty percent, we should break even.
Then that's the only option, unless we go higher, okay. I was thinking that was our surplus at the end, and we have forty-six thousand dollars at the fifteen, meaning we would be putting.
I just wasn't sure.
Putting some money in the fund like we need to.
I gotcha, no, this is just so we can try to break even.
That's we don't even have an option, it's, it's the dollar and the twenty percent.
I wasn't sure if you guys were gonna be comfortable with raising it twenty percent with what we may have to do with the electric. Or what we should do with the electric.
Sorry, we're losing sixty thousand now. And we can't, and it's a pass through, it's a pass through service, we can't be losing sixty thousand on a pass through service.
And ultimately, they need to have a.
Ultimately, though, what happens, right? It, it, it gets passed on and passed up, so I mean, if you're in business and you're, you're commercial, then you have to start figuring that, and your costs have to go up some too, just to offset the cost. The city shouldn't bear that, you should do that in your business and make, you keep your business profitable, if you provide the right service, a good service, you should be able to do that within reason. So, that, it's, so on the commercial side, I get it, it's more taxes and everything else, but you also have the opportunity to, if you provide a good service and you're rated well, you can, you know.
Well, how many commercial businesses do we actually, I mean, is business separate from commercial? I mean, like our office, we're business, right, or are we commercial?
Yeah, would believe, without getting into your account, you should be having a commercial trash rate.
I mean, I know it's different than what my residential is, but I do.
We don't have a business rate, we only have either commercial or residential.
Okay, so every business downtown is considered commercial?
Commercial.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, outside the door, I disagree with all of us, sitting here, we cannot lose money. Wow. I know, that's a great statement, so what do we gotta do to break even? What do we have to do to break even, God help me.
Dollar, twenty percent, I gotta.
But it needs to be even now, I mean, you can't get back the commercial up more, you can bring the residence a little bit too.
I'll, I'll tell you that.
Break even makes.
There's money built into the.
We brought the residential last year at some point, I don't remember when.
You get stuck on a dollar.
You what?
We brought the residential up last year at some point.
Yeah, but we dropped senior to five dollars.
Yeah, we did that in purpose.
Well, that's something you try to do, because you didn't want to, you didn't want the senior.
We dropped the senior rate to five dollars.
From what?
From eight.
Basically, the seniors were gonna see an electric rate increase and we said, no, we didn't wanna give them an electric rate increase, so we offset it with the trash that we could. So, it was about flat for them.
And we were all low in, in the average of overall trash cost for other.
Oh, we are.
Seats per capita.
And we just, we went through this last year and we had to make up for money. And we can't keep doing this every year, let's do it. And get a little bit.
You'd like to do that, but we don't know, we don't know how much things are gonna come back down. The two by four will, to some point, be twenty percent more than you were paying for it a year and a half ago. A transformer on pole may come back to just double the cost versus triple the cost. And so, you're, you, that, that's, that's the, that's the unknown here. I know that if the market will bear it, they won't give that money back.
Absolutely, and right now the market's bearing it, so.
So, we're not gonna see. So we're not gonna see relief on it, so I think what we gotta do to survive right now is to make sure we keep ourselves whole and 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 even, and then we hope we don't have to.
Twenty percent on the commercial, two dollars on the residential.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Backup.
So.
Fifteen percent and two dollars now.
I can tell you that currently lose money on commercial. That's why I'm putting the biggest rate increase on commercial.
And that's what we need to do.
Because we need to be charging at least what Daines charges us for commercial rates.
If we were doing just residential.
I wonder what is that?
And every year the contract goes up.
If we were doing just residential.
And we need to slowly build a buffer.
If we just rate.
No, no, you just can get residential by itself.
Oh, gotcha.
That are great.
Yeah.
So here's the deal, Donnie, you guys, this way you look at it. If you look at.
You slowly need to build a buffer.
If you look at residential by itself, it's in the it's in the black. It's not in the red. What the boat anchor here, it's the commercial side of the cost, the done engine net, that business side of it is costing us dramatically. We're we're profitable with the residential today if you look at residential by itself. So the culprit is.
It's a hard argument, you on this one. Uh.
So.
Well, hey, you know what?
You put it outside. What expense?
Twenty percent. Wait a minute. We can't go over twenty percent. You already said twenty percent.
So I know twenty percent sounds like a horrible number, but this one, in certain considerations, say you have a four yard dumpster. We currently charge eighty four seventy a month for a four yard dumpster. That rate would go up to a hundred and one dollars. So it's less than twenty dollar increase per month.
Yep. If you just had one, that's cool, but when you have five or six.
But if you had a quarter of a chair.
But.
And every chair you rent a month, you can pay for five of the dumpsters.
Oh, God.
Okay, we're still thinking about raising the residential. Don't tell me you're taking that off the table.
The dollar, the dollar.
No.
The dollar, the dollar is gonna be part of the dollar.
I thought you were gonna take that off the table.
But see, Teresa's gonna yell at you when you raise the dollar.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna have to pay the dollar too.
Don't you sneak any trash over mine.
Well, then Teresa's gonna yell at you when the bill at home comes up.
So I would, we kill that, that cat.
Kill those cats.
Put that in there.
I have P does right now.
Okay.
Well, that gets us out of the red. I mean, well, it.
Get us an even point.
Well, if we're breaking even, I mean, we're still not gonna be building a.
Until. Until Daines come around.
Then we get that for twenty percent on the commercial people next year, then then we'll be making money.
Hubble does their own, don't they? They don't even, the city doesn't mess with Hubble's trash, do they? I don't think so. I think they have their own, don't they?
We we do some of it.
Huh?
Because they're coming to dump their roll offs on tomorrow.
I don't know who does that.
I don't know if we do like the two or four yard thing.
Now, they do a lot of direct recycling with recycling companies, but there's still also a fair amount of trash that comes out of there. But most of the steel, most of the wood, uh.
Your pads all get recycled.
Yeah, all that stuff gets recycled with companies who for the most part pay us for it.
Bandage, strapping elbows in there since they recycle.
So, but I'm sure there's still plenty of trash that comes from.
I say, they, I talked to Daines today, and they're coming through tomorrow to dump roll offs for Hubble, because they do that overnight, and they're moving the roll off morning. So they do all the roll offs.
Yeah.
Okay, one last big ticket item that we I needed um final say so from you all, um, was the adding officer position standpoint. Like I said, um, currently, um, the police budget is one point three five million without adding an officer. Um, if you add an officer and get rid of, I'm sorry, terrible way to put it, but you would have to limit, um, you would need to eliminate three part time officers and limit the remaining part time officer to three hundred twenty five hours annually. Um, that would change the budget to three point seven five million, which would be a total of one point eight four two for public safety. I will tell you that, um, the public safety budget is over fifty, is over fifty three percent of the general fund budget. When we're looking at infrastructure, we're really gonna start taking a hit if we keep increasing. I'm not saying public safety isn't important, but I I would like the time to, um, do some research and looking into it. I I have talked to Harlan. This isn't gonna be a surprise though, um, to see if adding another police officer position is is feasible for our crime rates or population.
I think we need to consider moving that person who rotated off two hours. I know we can be paying overtime and reports and stuff, but I'd rather have the coverage, I think, of two officers than two hours.
I would like to see some scheduling from some other departments who have twenty four seven coverage.
Oh, the police departments? I I would agree, because if I've been asked once, and in fairness, I want to be able to answer this question correctly, right? And defend the departments and what we're doing and everything. The police department, absolutely, one hundred percent backed them to do it. But the problem you have is when they say, okay, why are there four officers on duty at four or five in the afternoon together, and why are there three at night with two vehicles eating in the restaurant together?
And one, only one officer from four to six a day.
And and so there's there's, yeah.
I got our heart problem with that.
No, no, I I get you. I agree with that, because that's that's why you have to have two officers, that kind of thing.
But I don't know if we can afford another one right now.
I don't know if.
I mean, that's gonna be.
I'm not solely.
Yeah, benefits and all in, that's gonna be twenty five percent of the reserve that you've built in right now.
Can I throw something else in there? I know that at one time you talked about getting rid of dispatching, and I know that's a big chunk.
Well, I would be careful with saying getting rid of, reducing or restructuring maybe.
Well, but I thought that the county was incapable of doing our dispatching.
The county's twenty five percent understaffed regularly or more.
Oh, okay, well, I'm.
But there's there's also services they perform during, especially during the days, but we gotta be careful.
Here's the problem you have. Megan went to it, went to, and they're and they're, they have to pay to be in joint communications. They have a full time person and a part time person, so they have a day person during the week, so you don't have all that stuff come over here to this department over here. Okay, and because we, these ladies in this office is busy. That being said, you can run it to where you have staggered hours of six to six, or wherever from before work or after work, or stop and do report, do whatever. They were able to make a a safe room for someone to go to, shut the door, push a button. Um, and the issue, the issue that's, I've had taxpayers come to me about, that are understanding of this is, they understand that we were, now, we are the only city in Boone County that does not use joint communications full time for all dispatching. I had a meeting with him and talked with him, because they are understaffed. That's absolutely true. Um, staffing's a problem with so many things, and that is like the air traffic controller's job, the nine one one.
Right.
Service center, okay? But we as taxpayers in Centaria are paying to belong to the country club in Columbia and Boone County, but we, the nine one one goes there, comes back here. So and then, so the the non emergency calls, the other cap, other other cities in the county are using it for that as well. And the problem I have is we're we're playing, it's double indemnity for us here. We're paying for it. We've never, we use it minimally. They, that's why they're glad to give us repeaters and give us tower upgrades and stuff up here. I think it's great for you to have your infrastructure, but I'd rather have a whole solid fire and police department as bodies of people that are well, well educated and 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 good in their profession. Um, and the other thing that comes with this, as you look at it, it goes down. They, in talking to them, they would hire, because they have such a level, they would hire any and everybody that a town had that was potentially gonna be displaced or repaired at a time, and it would take months. This isn't something that would happen in forty five days. They'd have to have a year advance notice to be able to get staffed up. And they talked about having to have a meeting to see if they'd allow us to join us. No, 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 you've been taking our money. That's not even an option. So talk to Dan Hatwell.
Oh, wow.
I talked to Dan Hatwell. I said, Dan, let me help you with something. My hair's on fire. We we're, we already belong to the country club. We got our big overalls and all repair club. It's Centaria, you think, but we belong to the country club. We we don't have to ask permission. We want to be paying the fee. So they would take any and every person we have at about a six dollar an hour increase in tax or seven. That's life changing. Well worth the drive to Columbia, to the communication center. So when you look at these things, you have to look at what's best overall. You look at that, and you look at not, and and I know people get excited about the uh, the wayfair tax. I always call it the wayfair tax, because that's what started out to be a long time ago.
Public use.
The public use tax, right? But the problem is, our infrastructure's paying for Amazon and everybody else to deliver this stuff in town, and we're keeping the streets up. So it only makes sense that we, that that's a couple of hundred thousand dollars, because they've been off. They said it was a hundred and sixty thousand, but what they found, the people that told us a hundred and sixty thousand, about two hundred and ten twenty. And so the bottom line is, we're missing out that, and if you figure two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars back in your pocket for a full time or part time person using that service, you're starting to, now you're looking at a half million dollars a year.
That could help when the police.
That could go, it could be for raises, for for the general fund.
For the safety of the citizen.
Overall, being able to do what we need to do discretionaryally with that money to make sure that we are whole and we are as good a town as there is to work for or be or live in. That's the overall view. You gotta look three, five years down the road, and and I don't see things getting a lot better as far as the cost and making a living and everything else.
I don't see things getting any safer either, so.
Well, you.
That's something we can.
Leasing's gonna be a challenge, because people are not telling their children, you can grow up be a farmer, or you can go be a police officer, or you can be a doctor. They're, you know, and I'm gonna tell you, there's the 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 largest exodus, other than nurses, over the pandemic. And all this is law enforcement. They have went to private sector and are making much more money being security and risk management for, you know, you name them, name any company, and and it's out there.
And we're fortunate that we didn't have happen to us what happened in Herman yesterday.
That's exactly right, but it could happen tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you can't, but but.
No, I know, I just.
You can't, you you can't. It's just like at the school, right? If somebody has your attention. One school resource officer between four campuses, the the chance of them being rights by right time.
It isn't gonna happen.
And then we've seen people on the news that chose to stand behind a tree.
Yeah.
First, you go take care of it. I got children at rest. I'm I'm armed. I'm coming here. God, God, take care of me one way or the other. So the bottom line is, I'm just talking about overall, we we have to start to look down the road. I'm not saying we need to do this today as far as that. It would take a year to do it, but it's something we need to go ahead and continue to have discussions about, to see if it's really a viable option.
Absolutely.
For us in the future. I'm not, we can't say, it's when you say that, they gets over there and they think, oh, they're fired on us, and uh, we're gonna lose our job. That's not what we want to.
No, exactly. I mean, I I I chose the wrong words.
No, no, no. I I had I had somebody early on in my tenure here that we were, we were, because in our role, we have to look at the options. We have to look at trash pickup. Should we be doing our own? That that's that's a, that's a deal that has to be run. You have to run to see if these services, yes, you don't want a third party anything out that you don't have to. We did, and I'm not sure it's it's feasible for it to be financially stretched and trust to be able to do it either, which we've looked at, right? But we have to still be able to say, we've done this exercise, and this is what we know. That's the reason why I'm doing it. So we still have to do that. We are blessed that we own our own wa, it was in the paper, James, it's wild. He, but that is in the paper, but the bottom line is, I damn sure wanna make sure we own our own sewer lines and water and a water tower in our city.
Oh, yeah, 'cause Holsfield, Holsfield's water and sewer because it's by somebody else, it's three times as much as what ours is.
We're intermunicipal. It's American water. So, and Mexico is too.
Yeah.
They did that many years ago. Mexico made that deal. So.
We need to look at the, at that, but.
As we go along, this is something we need to decide now.
A tempered approach, because there are benefits of having people there during the day, right?
Well, and 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 you make sure you you address all of those needs.
Yes.
So that doesn't go away for the citizens of Centaria. You've gotta have part time and a full time person over there to cover the part time.
Right.
Full time person, and you gotta have somebody that that does reporting, does filing, does all of that necessary stuff, polling files, faxing, doing.
So our officers can be on the street.
So they can be on the street. And 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 the problem I have today is, we have two officers that are fifty percent of their time as administrator.
What?
And and the chief is uh, at least fifty percent.
Well, you have to have that, don't you? I mean, you have to have that.
Reports gotta get filed.
Reports gotta get filed. It depends on, you know, I don't know. I don't.
Today's fine, I guess.
I don't think anybody's taking advantage of the system in any way, shape, or form, so I don't have to come out of what we're talking about here, but but I don't know. I've never ran a police department. I've never managed to schedule a police department. I don't know.
Well, we gotta save town, so it's been doing.
We wanna keep it safe.
We gotta keep it that way. Uh.
We wanna keep the drugs out of Centaria and not set up shop in Centaria, and we wanna be courteous to our our drivers, and they do a good job of that. They 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 give warnings. I've I've caught hecking on a couple of things from the police department, because we don't write enough citations, they don't think. Well, if soon as his wife or her husband gets that citation and doesn't get a warning, they're gonna go a crazy. And 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 I said, no, I would rather, now, I'm the mayor. If I'm speeding, you pull me over and say, hey, you guys slow it down, and the next week I'm doing the same thing in the same spot, give me a ticket. I've earned it. I didn't learn anything. I need an education. Give it to me. I mean, so I get that, but the police is an insurance policy, and you hope you don't have to ever really use it. So we gotta take care of it, but at the same time, to get back to the cost of of the department, it is a huge part of our budget.
So the use tax, if we can address that again, again, I mean, I don't want to put it on the next one, but I I think we could, all of us could work on getting that passed.
It's it's.
And then the joint communication, is that something that?
We we need to.
Something we can.
We need to be having discussions and talking to the people she was talking about, that that we've talked to before, and we need to look at other towns and continue to monitor and look at how are they doing there.
Well, you don't look at Herman. I mean, who are you look, who are you gonna look? Everybody's got police department problems.
Well, Ashland had had the county did it tonight.
Pardon?
Ashland just just, I don't know if they packed it, but they, it was on the news, they had a six hundred and ten thousand dollar budget increase for payroll only at the police department in Ashland. That's what they were asking for. I don't know if they got it or not, and that was to get them up to like twenty one dollars and staff properly. And they didn't have enough staffing to have a night shift at all, period. I'm talking about that's six o'clock at night all. That's Ashland.
So did they have to pay the county to do that?
I'm gonna guess they don't. They mainly do. Depends on how long you do it. Now, the county came up and helped us out as a partner for short term, but if you're, you you pay them for the service, if you're gonna have to do it. Yeah, so in that case, you do still.
Yeah, we do that.
Halls will do the same thing.
Scourging, doesn't it?
Yeah.
We don't want that. We don't want.
No, 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 no. We want our own police department, our own police department.
I will say that I have talked to other cities in the past that have, um, transitioned away from their their joint communication, and every one of them has regretted that decision.
That's why, it it can't be a hundred percent.
No, it can't. No, it can't.
And you gotta, and she gotta, you gotta get informed.
Yeah.
And you gotta look at what has worked better than the others, right? If they said they didn't like it, well, what did you not like about it? If you had to do over again, if you're gonna go with this, what would you have done differently? So you ask those questions, right? And then you decide whether or not it's good for Centaria. And it may not be. It may be worth paying double the difference.
We're able to cut a third shift, cut a third shift, for example, doing it and have joint communications do it. That might be reasonable, you know.
Right, so it it just depends, so yeah.
They weigh all your options.
Yeah, you got to. That's what you gotta do. But I'm just saying, those are things that we gotta keep fleshing out and do that.
Police department under budget now?
Hmm?
Are they, is the police department under budget now?
Under budget?
Yeah, or over budget? Or are they under or over budget?
Well, it's whatever you guys decide, if you're fine with it.
For the year.
Huh?
For the current, for the current status.
For the current year, they're they're a little under.
That's good.
Well, they're estimated to use one point four million, so no, they're not, they're right at budget for the year.
Have you got two cars in there too?
Um, I have one car in there right now. Um, with having a four hundred thousand dollar uh, reserve plus, I think I've got about, well, I'm gonna be adding a couple of things in, but we could be close to two hundred thousand dollars um, in the green there. So I didn't know if you guys wanted to go ahead and do the two vehicles instead of the one.
Is that four hundred thousand dollars reserve and two hundred thousand in the green? Just trying to make sure.
Yes.
Well, some, we we need, the general fund needs to become healthy.
Yeah.
Four hundred five dollars are healthy in today's world at all.
Better than the next.
No, 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 no. Don't get it wrong. I appreciate what you've done. Don't get it wrong. I'm not, I'm not slamming what you found. I know, I know you're proud to tell us that, and I'm glad you tell us that.
That's a six hundred thousand dollar swing.
But it is, what we were talking about, yes. So, so my point is, though, just because we have it, doesn't mean we need to spend it, doesn't mean. So my point is, though, just because we have it, doesn't mean we need to spend it, doesn't mean we shouldn't be.
I would say one car, no officer.
Sorry.
One car, no officer.
Another officer?
What he, what he's, you should want to hire.
If, if he kept it as a new patrol officer, that, you're gonna add about eighty to ninety thousand dollars a year. Just, just.
Well, the problem.
I do.
The problem I have with that.
When we hired him, didn't he say he could deal with ten officers plus him, and he was good?
Well, we, we had nine officers plus him.
All right, ten officers, he was good with ten officers.
That's what I was told.
Yeah, and now he wants another.
But in all fairness, I mean, everybody, when a manager gets in, evaluates.
He has to evaluate what it takes to do the, the, the paperwork and everything, so in fairness to him, I mean.
And I can't hold him, if, if he came back and was saying, I need three more, you know, thirty percent, wait a minute, timeout, but if somebody comes back and say, one heavy or one short, that's.
Here's my concern with doing an officer and a patrol car.
I'm not saying I wanna add an officer.
That patrol car, if we, if we don't change out a vehicle, are we gonna spend eighteen thousand dollars on maintenance on it?
Well, that, that's the thing. So they had two vehicles that they're having to put in a shop a lot, so that's the two vehicles they were asking to replace for this budget year. If we don't do the additional, I have one car budget in, in there right now. I'm saying this since I have a little bit of surplus in the general fund, that we want to go ahead and get the two vehicles for the police department this year.
I thought we were running short when we added the several leased vehicles a couple of years back, so I think, yes, we should do two vehicles. If, if we're paying that much for having cars repaired.
I, I just do a number. I don't, I don't use that number. I'm just saying, because that's what we're gonna end up with this year if we don't replace one of them. So, I mean, you're trading, you're trading money off for what it costs you, if you're right, for a vehicle.
And we can sell those two because they still run.
Would they be leased vehicles or, or?
Well, that's what I would ask you guys, and this is if we can find the vehicles this year. Every, I would say, D department and every utility department is having trouble finding.
We, we need to be cautious of what we buy if we buy the vehicle.
Yeah.
Because people are going to go, depending on what they, they drive out on the street that's new, we, we need to make sure it's, it, it's a vehicle that's not gonna offend the public.
Right, Ford has a really good police inspector price package on their vehicles.
On what? What model?
The Explorer, I believe.
Explorer, but there's a lot of difference between Explorer and Tahoe.
Oh, we're not, yeah.
As far as perception.
I've already said neither of them.
Yeah, because that's what we brought up tonight, was too tall.
Well, that's just why I bring that up, right? I mean, because I'm, I know what that perception will be, oh, our rates are going up here, but they can now drive V's, right?
But if we were able to find the Rando's again, would you guys be okay with them going with the Rando's? I know that they had the water pump issue this year.
Any manufacturer has problems with a given year or something, man, and suppliers are mad at the water pump problem, unfortunately, but.
I would say we need to hold on the officer and evaluate overall, like you've been talking about, but I think we should add the one extra car.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. I think we do two cars, I don't think we do the officer.
Yeah. Because one, there's no guarantee we're actually gonna get both.
We might get six months of everything we get with everything going on.
We need to approve it and get it out there. It may take, I mean, how long did it take us to get that one truck? Eighteen months?
Something like that.
And then we got something that we didn't even order, we get better then, but.
Can they drive yours to the?
Huh?
Huh?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, the city's gonna pay for it, you know, the replacement value if something happens.
And then just what I got in front of you is just the totals that I'm working with, just on overall.
This is much more favorable than the last time we talked, right? This is much, we can exhale a little bit.
This is, this is.
We should have half a million dollars in some change in buffer at this point then.
About, I mean, after adding in the vehicle and making the change for the chamber and.
Which isn't quite ten percent of the budget, but it's getting closer, and we just need to.
Keep working at it.
Yeah, we, we won't fix it in one year.
You have ARPA on here. My question about that is, is it the thirty, thirty-first of this month that all requests have to be in gradually, that's right?
So we passed that ordinance first, stated that our, our ARPA money is going towards lost revenue. So I gotta check and see. I believe that's it as far as ARPA recording guidelines are, because we put it towards lost revenue. Now, for our own internal auditing, we wanted to make sure that it went towards specific audit or specific.
You have to be able to be audited.
So we're making sure that.
Every dollar has to be accounted, right, that's all.
Not to the government, because we put it towards lost revenue.
We, we want, it, it was accountable to the board.
Yeah, it was accountable. You wanted to make sure you wanted it tracked, so, yes. There are a couple of things that I wanna change from that, and this is how I balance the budget. I forgot to tell you, I am so sorry. You had set aside another hundred thousand dollars for sewer lining. I would like to take that back and put it in the general fund.
Why, why do you want to take out sewer lining?
Because we have got four hundred thousand dollars going to sewer lining, and I needed some reserves.
Well, is that suitable?
That's part of the reserves.
We have enough to take care of it, the sewer lining?
Oh, yeah. We've got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're gonna spend on sewer main lining.
So how much of that sewer money that the four hundred thousand or so was coming out of the general fund versus?
Well, it, it was a sewer fund.
Oh, a sewer fund.
Yeah, we were giving two hundred thousand dollars of ARPA money to sewer main lining.
So you're, you're, you're saying what you want.
Essentially, it was three hundred for ARPA input.
No, instead of two hundred thousand dollars for ARPA going to sewer main lining, just a hundred thousand, and then a hundred thousand going to the contingency and reserve.
So my question is, with that hundred thousand dollars, what, how much, how many dollars worth of sewer lining do we do?
I believe it was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so we're still doing three hundred and fifty thousand, okay. Long as we're not getting mahawk, right? I think that's the key thing.
No, we, we have done more sewer main lining in the last.
A lot.
Year, and then this year, upcoming year.
Because we're way behind on.
We're way behind, we're getting caught up, and that's what we need to continue to do.
I believe the number is two and a half million dollars is what we need to do with sewer main lining. It's a lot.
So we gotta continue to have that as a focus of.
That's gonna be one of my ARPA projects I submit to the county.
Good, that's what, that's what we talked about that. And that's, and that, but that has to be submitted by the thirty-first?
By the thirty-first.
That's right.
If anybody feels like coming in and helping write in some applications, just let me know, I'll get you set up on the computer.
I'll do it.
Get it done.
Yes, sure.
But we can apply for a lot of money if we want to.
We're applying for the other street projects that we had talked about in our last meeting, what, a hundred thousand dollars there?
The.
The drainage did.
The one by the pool, I mean, the one by the high school and all of that.
Yeah, there were a couple, there were a couple items.
It was stormwater items.
Stormwater, yeah.
Yes, I am applying for stormwater. I'm also applying for, remember when we applied for the ARPA money for the bullet station? We used Cochran to write that up, and then to take that information and turn it into an ARPA application. See if we can't get that paper so we can get that thing here, because I believe it was built in the early.
And you're gonna see, also with that request, can we go back and collect on the west side of, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know if they make it retroactive or not. We don't try.
We can find out, yeah, it's worth asking a question.
Yeah, okay. So that's, that's all I got. I'm going to hopefully have the draft audit ready for you guys to look at at the next meeting, not vote on it, but at least look at it. That way if you see anything that you need for me to tweak or have questions about, you can ask me before we need to pass it at the end of the month.
And we're looking at.
We need a meeting.
We do, at, what we were talking about, folks, so take, take a thought on this. Tell everybody they have to have their finances in and done, accounts payable and everything done by the twenty-eighth. And Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, have a, have a special meeting for closing out.
Would you be able to zoom in?
The year.
We had it the twenty-ninth.
Likely, yeah.
Okay.
That's Wednesday night, right?
Wednesday night.
Yeah, I'll be out of the country, so, for work, so.
It just, we wanna do it as late as we can, but at the same time, we don't wanna do it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we do it every year, yeah. I, I didn't even think about it when I booked my.
No, no problem.
I was thinking about ma, making sure it's here the twentieth. I always try to schedule around the regular.
Well, you'll, you'll, you'll stare through stuff and ask questions and anything, we'll be fine on that part of it, and then, it'll be pretty vague by then, if you give us an update. It's wonderful balance to get it done with what the new balance is for finishing the year, and then we'll be approving the budget for the new year.
Yeah, because I'll have to update the draft for the estimated con for what our revenues and expenses actually end up being.
So send out a meeting request tomorrow to all the board if you want.
Well, you guys can just vote.
Okay, we'll do that, okay. We'll do that next week.
If you come up with any extra money, take it out of the commercial trash fund.
No, no, no.
Come up with.
That's red, we gotta get black.
We are now.
You're doing good. You're doing good, that'd be real.
I find a mistake in the spreadsheet, the formula makes it wrong.
We are at item five, which is as may arise, is there any as may arise? We've talked about a lot of stuff, I don't know what else could arise, but if there is any favor.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, first and second to adjourn. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.